Comes from celebrating over 8,000 birthdays last year. More than any health system in Southern New Jersey. Expect a personalized maternity experience as you choose from a compassionate family of care that includes over 50 OBs and midwives, as well as high-risk expertise if needed. Explore Virtua Health and expect everything you're dreaming of and more. Visit virtua.org/birthday. That's virtua.org/birthday.
I know everything there is to know about running a coffee shop, but for small business insurance, I need my State Farm agent. They make sure my business stays piping hot. And I stay cool and confident. See, they're a small business owner.
Good evening and welcome to Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for November 23rd, 2021. As has been done in the past, I will just ask everybody to remember all those who've been affected by this horrible virus and their families, and those on the front lines, doctors, nurses, EMTs, police, fire, all who answered the call to duty unselfishly. And those everyday important essential workers, the garbage collectors, supermarket workers, food servers, and that's just to name a few. And here in our township, our management and administrative staff, our public works department, together they keep our township running. Let us support our local businesses the best we can, and please don't forget to be generous. Most of all, treat people with respect and kindness, even those who you may disagree with. As we start to come out of this pandemic, together as a community, we will be stronger when this is over. Thursday happens to be Thanksgiving, and even in these turbulent times in our country and in the world, let's not forget how lucky we are, and to show thanks and gratitude for what we have. If you just bow your heads for a moment? If you stand with the board for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Lewis, any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No special actions. We'll go into our first session of public comment. Anyone that has something to say, please come up to the podium. Anything that's not on the agenda right now, please come up to your podium and have your say.
Good evening, everyone on the board and members of the public. I want to thank you for giving me an hour this evening. Just kidding, just kidding. I'm Evan Resnickoff, the chief of the Newtown Ambulance Squad, and I just want to take a couple of seconds, as I always come out every year around this time of year. Our subscription drive was mailed out. Most of you should have received this by now in the mail, went out last week. And I want to thank the residents of Newtown Township this year. The support on our 2021 campaign was just incredible. We had a 12% increase in donors. And every year I track those that give $100 or more, and we were almost 80 more people this year than last year that gave $100 or more. There's 180, 180 letters went out this year to the higher, the $100 or more club, and it really helped us at a time when we needed it the most. So we appreciate everyone's support again this year who donated or didn't donate before that would donate again this year. We did have an increase in our rates this year, what we charge for service to the insurance companies, which in turn affects co-pays and deductibles because our costs escalated with the cost of supplies and labor. So this helps us greatly, and if you should have to use us, it helps you as well by writing off any balance that you have for copay. Or if you don't have insurance, it writes off the whole thing. So it's a great benefit to have. So, and again, it's always an open invitation to come see our facility, our building, meet our staff. You can call me at the rescue squad at extension 114. And, you know, with a, with a appointment, we can have anyone come in and take a look around and give you a tour of our ambulance and our facilities. We're 359 runs busier than this time last year, and I couldn't get 2019 statistics tonight because it was an old system that we used to use then, but I know the county is up 12% over 2019, because kind of comparing last year is a little bit unfair with it being a COVID year. But it's been, been busy with emergency medical services in Bucks County, and we all appreciate everyone's support every year. So, thank you very much.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, hi, hi Evan, how you doing? You've usually, in the past, have come before us when you have some kind of annual report. I guess that takes a little while to do. Will you be able to do that for 2021 when you have the information?
Yeah, and again, for 20, we couldn't do much with 2020, and we're so lean staffing-wise, especially administratively. So we, we've got some good numbers and statistics for 2021, and, you know, next year, early next year, we can come up with, you know, an actual real annual report like we had done some time ago, a published annual report.
That'd be great, thank you.
And I just wanted to emphasize, I have it upside down. I got my subscription materials as well. It was laying by the desk when I was grabbing my stuff this evening, so I brought it along as a visual aid. Please subscribe.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Good evening, I'm Terry Christensen, Kirkwood Drive, 67 Kirkwood Drive. I want to begin by thanking each of you for your service to our community. I also am moved, this isn't what I intended to talk about, but I was moved by the, I'm led by the report of Newtown Ambulance. I am alive because Newtown Ambulance was there. I had complications in the, after the second operation when I was having a little dust-up with cancer, and they were, even though I was losing a lot of blood, they were able to get me to the hospital in a timely fashion. So I am, I am very grateful. I want to speak tonight about the importance of having hybrid meetings. Before I get too far along in this, I want a clarification. Mr. Mack, you, you said to me, or said to all of us, that the estimate you got for having hybrid meetings was north of $30,000, is that correct?
We got some estimates from video gold, different estimates, and talking to people, that's what I've heard. I mean, I haven't looked at the proposals, but it depends on what exactly, how, how many meetings you're going to cover to do hybrid and so on. What I do know from video gold is that our total equipment up there is very antiquated and piecemeal, sometimes they don't work together. So there's a lot that can be done to improve that. And I'm, you know, I'm sure that would cost more than $30,000, but, so.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that answers my question. That's enough to work with. I'm associated with three groups who have regular hybrid meetings. In one case, we have three, two to, two to five people most onsite, and 12 to 15 people connecting remotely. In another case, those ratios are reversed. We have 12 people typically onsite, four to 10 people connecting remotely. And, and I'm a member of Newtown Friends Meeting, and we became a hybrid Quaker meeting in the middle of October. We have between five and 10 people in our meeting house and 20 and 30 people connecting remotely. And they don't just connect to our meeting for worship, they connect for adult religious education or seminars. In each case, in each case, I should say that there have been no technical difficulties, except with the one group with, which had a large number of people onsite because some people did not hold the microphone correctly, so their voice sounded a little muffled. Other than that, we have, had no technical difficulties, and in each case, we spent well under, well under $2,000 to make this happen. This is important to me because I don't believe a driver's license should be a prerequisite for, for participating in civil and municipal governance. We have a number of people on the, particularly on the Steyer Campus of Friends Village on Dolington Road, who have a breadth of experience and expertise, and I believe if we made it possible for, for those folks, not just to hear what was happening, but to participate in the meeting, the fruits of their labors would be helpful to improving the quality of life for everyone in this community. I've never known a problem that got easier to solve if you begin by discarding half or some portion of the available brain power. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Sorry, no minor approvals? Reports of committees, boards, and commissions, the planning commission, Mr. Fidler?
Good evening. Alan Fidler, chairman of Newtown Township Planning Commission, here to give you a quick synopsis of our November 16, 2021 meeting. We had one zoning hearing board application that evening. That was for Rebecca Saunders Orkeys at 285 North Lincoln Avenue. The planning commission reviewed this application for zoning relief for impervious surface of 25.9%, where the maximum permitted is 13%, and the existing is 21.6%. Setback relief for the rear yard for three feet, and the distance between buildings of 20 feet, 37 feet, and 50 feet, where the required distance is 60 feet. Wish to build a two-story detached garage with an asphalt driveway extension. The applicant explained that the garage will be built to house cars and to create an office space to work from home. The commission asked that the applicant double-check that the proposed driveway pad is sufficient for cars to turn around to avoid backing down the driveway and to plan to offset any additional runoff from the increased impervious surface. The applicant also seeking a special exception to build a garage on a non-conforming lot. The commission recommended that the board support the application as the additional driveway will make a safer condition for driving out of the, onto busy Lincoln Avenue, and the additional space is needed for parking to accommodate special physical needs. Under land development, we had the Arcadia Planning Module. As per the advice of our engineer, the commission voted to authorize the chairman to sign the planning module, component 4A, for the land development project, and this was completed. So if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Any questions for Alan?
That Arcadia plan is for sewage or something?
Yes, that, that is one of the land development requirements to make application that additional capacity of EDUs is available for the project, as well as sufficient water supply from Philadelphia Water Company. That application is routinely reviewed by the township engineer, they sign off on it, planning commission signs the document and moves it forward in the process for approval.
Any other questions for Alan? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a great Thanksgiving.
You too, thank you, Alan. Board of members reports, Mr. Fisher?
I'll just repeat what Mr. Fidler just said. Happy, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. That's all I have. The finance committee is meeting down the hall tonight. I should mention that.
Okay, great. Mr. Mack?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
I'm ready, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Oxley?
Happy harvest.
All right, thank you. No public hearing tonight, land development, reports of officials, our engineer?
Thank you. I have no agenda items tonight, but I just wanted to provide a quick update on the Township's road program. We've issued the punch list to the contractor, so they'll be working on that, and then hopefully next month, on your agenda, you'll be seeing a few payment applications for them, but we're, we're working to close that project out.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think I asked you offline about some other projects. Do you mind going over that shortlist, like?
Sure.
I know later we're talking about the LED streetlights, so we can.
We can skip that.
We can skip that part, but I, you know, as you know, I'm kind of interested in the Lower Dolington Road Trail project and the, a couple of the other things that we were talking about.
Yep, sure. So for Lower Dolington Road Trail, contractors, you know, we're in constant contact with them. They're still working on getting a revised schedule to us in order to accommodate the long lead times on the piping material. So as soon as we get that, we will provide an updated schedule to the township.
The piping material you're talking about is for the watershed drainage?
For the, yep, so we're proposing infiltration trenches along the length of the trail for stormwater management. So we've been seeing delays with that plastic pipe material that goes in the trench, unfortunately.
So they cannot give you any estimate until they know what's happening with supplies?
Correct, yep.
But don't you think at this point in the winter coming up, it's going to be impossible to start work on it until the spring?
It'll likely be pushed to the spring, yep, at this point. Hopefully, they'll be able to, once they procure those materials, they should be able to work on the utility work first, and then hopefully right when spring starts, they'll be able to pave the trail, and that's what we're looking at now. So again, as soon as I have that updated schedule from them, you know, I'll share that information with everyone.
Keep our fingers crossed. The other thing, I, I heard from Steve Santasaro's office that he got some DCED watershed restoration grant money for some municipalities, and I know that we applied for such a grant to do a stream bank restoration and clock center, clock nature center. Can you give us an update on that application?
I have not heard in regards to that application yet. I imagine that they, I'm not sure if they sent the press release out yet, but that's, you know, one thing that we're checking on with them. Unfortunately, I haven't heard yet.
Well, Mrs. Santasaro had an Instagram post, so it seems to me that DCED made an official, you know, announcement of the grant winners, and we're not on the list, I guess.
If, I can confirm that. If that's the case, you know, we'll follow up with them to see, you know, information about our application and where we could improve next time, if that's the case. So I'll follow up with them on that.
Okay.
I think the other item was the Village of Newtown traffic study. Design engineer indicated that they would submit that to us this week. Haven't received it yet, so we'll follow up with them once they provide that to us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
In the future, can we have those things, those additional items on the agenda? Mr., Mr. Lewis, I asked you if there were any adjustments. You said no, but now we've had items mentioned by Mr. Mack, which were never added to the agenda. And Mr. Mack knows the procedure to have something added to the agenda.
Well, I, I had asked Mr. Lewis to do that in the past.
Solicitor's report?
We didn't do it this time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our report is NAC expansion project authorization for final escrow release. By letter dated November 17th, the CKS Engineers has approved the final escrow release to the NAC in the amount of $259,883, and would be appropriate for a motion to authorize that final escrow release.
Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Does that have a second?
Second.
Any questions from the board?
Go ahead. Did you want? I know that at the March 10th, 2021 meeting, we had talked to Mr. Worthington about the trees that he removed, and he wouldn't be planting back there again. And he said he'd be willing to donate, what was it, 28 trees or so?
Something, 24, 28?
Something like that, to the tree fund, but I'm not sure if we do have a tree fund. What, how can, can we still secure that? I guess it would be some funds to plant trees. I know he was interested in having those trees planted in Robert Ridge Park, where we already have some tree planting going on.
I'll let Mr. Lewis address that.
As, as part of the development agreement, there was a requirement that the developer posed $12,500, and they have provided that.
So that would be exclusively used for replanting trees in one of our parks?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions from the public? Seeing none of the questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is 5-0.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Bucks County EMS request for ARPA funds. The Bucks County EMS has asked all townships in the county and boroughs to commit to contributing a specific amount calculated based on population. They sent a fairly detailed letter to the township that was in the packet. This is a request that I view as premature, only because the final regulations and rules regarding the use of ARPA funds has not been promulgated yet, and therefore, I think it's premature to commit. Once the final rules are promulgated and are available, we can determine whether this is a legitimate expenditure of ARPA funds, and it can come back before you if you wish to consider whether to commit, but again, I believe it's premature. That's my recommendation, is that the board take no action on this at this time.
Okay, but we'll, we'll know going into the future if this is a possibility.
Correct.
But, I mean, just, just to let people know, the one thing, we do budget for our rescue squad, I believe this year it's 178,000 that Newtown Township is going to be giving to the rescue squad, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, as part of, as part of the designated tax, correct?
Okay. That's a good thing. I, I see Evan smiling back there, underneath his mask, so that's a good thing.
Next item on our agenda is consideration to direct the planning commission to review the Arcadia Highway Occupancy Permit Application. Arcadia filed a Highway Occupancy Permit Application with PennDOT for the access drive to the Arcadia development. With that was a, was submission that included the U-turn at Diamond Drive and Mill Pond Road intersection with Buck Road. In its materials, PennDOT requested comment from the Township Planning Commission, and in order for the planning commission to review something like this, it has to be authorized by this board for the planning commission to take action. So if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to authorize the planning commission to review the Arcadia Highway Occupancy Permit Application and comment to the board on that application.
Does that have such a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Does that have a second?
All second.
The motion is seconded. Questions from the board?
I would just note that, you know, I've looked over the materials that Arcadia sent to PennDOT, and they submitted a letter from our engineer saying that we've had an opportunity to look at this, this application. Unfortunately, that letter never mentions traffic, U-turn, or anything like that, so they were, they already submitted to PennDOT their idea that they've already complied with the request, where in fact, this letter was in March, in March 2021, even before they submitted the application. So what we're talking about here is for the planning commission and the engineer associated with the planning commission to look over the actual plan that was submitted to, to PennDOT, is that correct?
I believe that is correct, Mr. Mack, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the public?
Hi, my name's Greg Zornoda, Newtown Grant, right down the road here. A question on the Arcadia situation. What if our planning commission says, no, this doesn't work for us? Now, we've already gone, we can't win in court, so if the planning commission says that, are we just wasting the planning commission's time, or do we have some, some way to rectify this situation? Any way to rectify the situation?
I don't know. You'd have to ask our solicitor about that, but the idea is that this plan at least would get before the public to see the details, and the planning commission, Mr. Fidler told me that, you know, they could use some, something to look over to help us evaluate this application.
Mr. Sanders?
So they're only evaluating the application of the project.
Did you, did you want an answer?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Planning commission's been asked by PennDOT to review it.
Oh, PennDOT?
PennDOT.
Okay.
The planning commission will submit its comments to the board, and those comments will be sent to PennDOT, and PennDOT will accept those comments and give them whatever weight that PennDOT desires to give them. If the planning commission says this is the most horrific thing we've ever seen, it's a horrible, you know, accident a minute waiting to happen, and this is going to be a detriment, severe detriment to the township, that comment will go to PennDOT, and PennDOT will weigh, will take that into consideration, but I can't guarantee that it's going to sway PennDOT's issuance of a permit one way or the other.
And those people from over, that have filed suit and lost in regards to all this situation, they're going to be allowed to make their comments too?
They sure are.
Okay, so we're going to get the full view of why this is a stupid idea.
Right. And, and let me add, Eagle Ridge as a community association is a separate party to the PennDOT proceedings on the highway occupancy permit. So all the plans that get filed, all the notices that are given, they receive them the same, and they're given an opportunity to comment.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else on this, this motion? Okay, seeing none of the questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is 5-0.
Thank you. Final item on the agenda is the zoning hearing board application that Mr. Fidler just reported on. This is a two-car detached garage that needs some relief from the zoning hearing board. Is there any desire by the board to take a position on this application?
We're not talking about the garage. That's a separate, they need a separate variance or something for that, right? They're talking about the driveway only.
Well, they're building a garage that is going to be located closer to other buildings and going to encroach into the side and rear yard, or uncertain to the rear yard setback. So it's all, all the relief that they need is in one application. They need a special exception to build this garage on a non-conforming lot.
Yes.
That's the special exception, and they need variant, dimensional variances.
So what are we, what are we voting on? They're going to have to come back to us anyway with the garage?
No, it's probably a building permit.
I get it.
Yeah.
We're discussing whether to weigh in at all. I mean, we could be silent, or we could.
Let the zoning hearing board make that decision.
I noticed that the planning commission did recommend that we support it.
Does anyone want the solicitor to defend the township in this matter?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. That concludes our report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $4,853,361. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. We have Chief Forsythe to give his monthly report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everybody. I promise I won't take the hour that Evan took. For the month of October, Newtown Emergency Services and the Fire Association responded to 123 incidents. The breakdown of those are 67 EMS calls, four fumes calls, eight automobile accidents, 29 alarm systems, two building fires, seven dwelling fires, three wires outside, and one stuck elevator. Emergency services conducted 30 fire safety inspections in the township, 25 in the borough. For this report, I broke down, as the board has requested, for the calls. There were 91 calls in Newtown Township and 15 in Newtown Borough. Emergency services handled nine of the calls in Newtown Borough, and the Fire Association handled six. So between the borough and the township, there were 106 calls. So hopefully that will help everybody figure out what our call is for. I don't, I include the mutual aid calls in the monthly report. However, I think when we talk about numbers and percentages, we just include Newtown Township and Newtown Borough. So that's why, I hope that answers any questions that you may have as far as the calls in the borough. From this point on, I'll add that to my monthly report so that you guys are aware of what the call situation is.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for the chief?
I have just a couple. First of all, seems like the report is getting more and more detailed.
Well, we're getting better every day with our new computer system, our new records management system, so we're able to generate more reports. And that's what we're trying to do, is to give everybody enough information so that you know what we're doing.
Right. And then I had a question earlier about the difference between a service call and a series. There's two sets of five, a set of 500s and a set of 600s. 500s are service calls, the 600s are series calls.
The 600 series calls, as I've explained to you guys before, that is a call that if we're dispatched, I'll take this morning, for example. At 7:30, we were dispatched to Chandler Hall. Prior to us even leaving the building, the maintenance director called and said it was a false alarm. They had a problem in the building, so we did not respond, but we still document it for several reasons. For us as calls, and for Chandler Hall, if they have an issue with insurance, they can verify that the alarm system was working properly. That's a 600 series call. So anything that we're dispatched to and what we call recalled right away, and we do not respond, that goes into the 600 series. The service calls are something that if we go out to help a resident, that's a service call that we document.
Thank you. I have to take better notes, because I do remember you explaining that to us before.
That's okay, I don't mind.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other item under my report for the board's consideration. As you're aware, our current finance director, Teresa Halper, is retiring at the end of this month. So we have asked her to put together a professional services proposal that our solicitor has drafted. And it pays $65 an hour for her to act as a consultant during the transition period while we get a new finance director in place. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to approve the agreement for municipal finance services.
Do you have such a motion?
Some move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board on this motion? From the public? Seeing none, a call to question, all is in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Pass is five zero.
Mr. Chairman, briefly, I just wanted to mention that we did have an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss matters of potential litigation.
Thank you.
That's all I have under my report.
Okay. Minutes, bills, lists, and reports, Mr. Mack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November 10th Board of Supervisors meeting.
Have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board on the minutes? From the public? Seeing none, a call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is five zero.
Okay, for the bills list, I make a motion that we approve the payment of our bills on the bills list dated November 23rd, 2021, totaling $140,196.43.
Have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board on the bills list? From the public? Seeing none, a call to question, all is in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Pass is five zero.
Finally, I make a motion to do our inter-fund transfers according to the bills list dated November 23rd, 2021, totaling $248,138.28.
Have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, a call to question, all is in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Pass is five zero. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Okay. Move on to our second session of public comment. Anyone who would like to have something to say, please come up to the podium.
I guess if you add it all up, I'll be up here an hour. Anyway, I was hoping to see the chief here, because I want to find out about getting electronic signs on North Drive. And with North Drive, I understand that we're pretty close to putting together the deal with Toll Brothers, and they are now going to use the lights at North Drive that are set there now. But they're going to have to be reconfigured. And will they reconfigure, like, the turning lanes in and out of the new development? Or is that all to be planned?
I believe that's, that's in the plan, like a left-hand turn, arrow and so on, so the traffic can move.
Anything that occurs at that signal will need to be permitted by PennDOT. The configuration of the intersection is all, PennDOT's jurisdiction, as 413 is a state highway.
Will we have any say in it, or is it just whatever PennDOT says?
It's, well, same, same procedure as Arcadia. PennDOT will ask for review, and yes, so there will be, there'll be some participation opportunities.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had, and like I said, the chief's not here. I'd like to get, find out about getting a speed limit sign on North Drive. People come off the, I mean, the 413, and they're flying to get home at night. There's kids walking around, there's people walking dogs, there's, there's people on bikes if it's early enough, because they start at, like, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. The morning is just as bad, except they slow down because there's buses there. But once they get past them buses, they hit it. So I would think, it's been over a year since we've had any signals over there. So I don't know how we get on the rotation, if the board does it, or I got to go see the chief, or who do I talk to?
Yeah, the chief usually handles those rotations on different roadways. But, but all throughout North Drive, there is a 25 mile an hour speed limit signs that are up and down North and South Drive.
You want to sit there with me and watch them fly up and down? I mean, I see it all. I've got a, I have a little puppy dog that needs to be walked a lot. And I'm telling you, it's like, I could have a checkered flag there some days. It's ridiculous.
I take that road every day, and I go 25 miles an hour just to bother the person behind me. And if you, if you talk to the chief, he'll tell you that most of the people that they give tickets to live in Newtown Grant.
And that would be fine. That would be fine if they're, if they're speeding up there and causing a hazardous situation.
But we'll, we'll see if he could get a electronic sign out there on North Drive.
And if it works out well, is there a way to get it permanently? Or does that have to go through the board as a separate?
That I can't answer. I guess the chief will keep, will keep numbers of speeders and so on. If it is habitual, maybe there is something they could do.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Are you asking for those little signs that go on a pole that tell you what your speed is?
Yeah, the electronic signs, yeah. Because some people don't realize what speed they're doing. I know they don't.
I know that that's, there's one on the road near my, where I live, and it's been there for quite a while. So I don't know if it's permanent or what, but.
Like I said, we had it once before, and it was been over a year. And I, like I said, I was told it was a rotation thing.
And there's one, there's one on Swamp Road right now, too.
All right. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You too, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll go into old business, old business. We are, we have the 2022 budget discussion. I will open it to the board for discussion.
Okay. Since nobody's starting, can I say a few words? I just noticed that, you know, with this revised preliminary budget, we got our reserve fund down to 8.6%. Last year, I think it was 23%. The year before that, it was 20%. In 2019, it was 17%. In 2018, it was 21%.
Can I just clarify? That wasn't the projected number in the budget. You're talking about end of year.
Right, you're, you're talking, you're referring, you're, you're talking about budgeted versus actual.
Right. Which, right now, we have $4 million.
Yeah.
And so I mean, that, but that's not what was projected last year.
No, I'm going by what the numbers were in the budgets, what was budgeted, I think, and what was reported by the ESI consultants in their graph on what.
I understand, but that budget, but those percentages are not what was budgeted last year.
Well, in any.
I think we're at 10% last year.
In any case, that's what the reserve fund was, more or less. My point is that the reserve fund is going in a downward path, whereas the five-year plan that we were supposed to be following has it in an upward path. And that the experts recommend that we have a 17% at least reserve fund, and that we have a resolution, I believe, where we would like to keep it at least 10%. So I don't know, it would be my opinion that, you know, there needs to be some adjustment in the budget to get that reserve fund back up at least over 10% as budgeted. So that's the only point I want to make. I do, don't want to cut out certain things from the budget, but I think there are some things in there that we might be able to delay until next year so that we can achieve that and keep our reserve on, in a healthy situation.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. Kyle, do you have something? Dennis?
I'm, I don't want to get into a long argument with John, but I have noticed over the course of the years that the actuals of the ending fund balance, the actuals, have performed better than what was budgeted. So my thought, and if it goes according, accordingly, I haven't done the calculation, but we'd at least be over the 10%, ending fund balance next year if that holds through. Now, I haven't done, like I say, I haven't averaged that out and done the calculations, but I would expect, especially since we have the, the ARPA funds, that at some point, we'll get the final rolls, the final rules, and be able to apply those. And that will be a shot in the arm, in the revenue side of the, of the budget. So I do think the ending fund, there's a, I'd, I'd love to see it over 10% as a, as a budgeted, but I do believe it'll be there in the actual.
Thank you, Dennis. No other question, Mr. Oxley? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion to pass this preliminary budget, 2022, as our, I guess, what would you call it, our working budget going into next year?
I, I don't think you can, because it needs to be advertised for a period of 20 days.
Right, right, that, that's correct. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, the board authorized the advertisement and hanging of the preliminary budget. And it, 20 days hasn't passed since then.
All right.
So the first time you'll be able to take action on this, I guess, is at your next meeting, December 8th?
Correct.
December 8th.
Okay. Very good. All right, so we have no motion at this time. Okay, any new business? No new business, any, any for an executive session?
Not this evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Can I, I don't know if this would be new business or old business, but I made a mistake when I was asking Liana for some feedback on, on the LED streetlights. Can we discuss what we've learned today or yesterday?
Does any of the board members have this information that's going to be discussed that we could refer to? I don't think we do, do we?
It was sent out by email, I believe, to everybody.
But it's, again, it's not on the agenda, it's not in our packets, and you're asking us to discuss something that we don't even have, anything physical to discuss.
It's old business.
Well, but we still do not, well, I could go back and quote old business from six months ago.
All right, so you're not going to allow it, okay.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Without objection, we are adjourned for the evening. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.